All right, welcome ladies and gentlemen to the Thursday, September 18th, 2025 full council meeting. Welcome to our youth council that is here tonight and also our Girl Scouts that are back there. We have a, Mr. Steven Davis was not able to make it down, he was going to pray for us, but we do have one of our youth councils volunteered to come up, Addison Hickson. And so if you would, what we're going to do is Ms., or not, not, young lady Addison Hickson, I apologize, she's going to come up and pray. After she's done, please remain standing for 30 seconds for a moment of silence and then please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. A lot of it.
Please bow with me. God, I thank you for this day, I thank you for everything you've given us and all these opportunities that you have given us this day, this year, and for everything you've blessed in this town and this country. Please help this town as we get through the rest of this year and this hard time right now and please just keep your hands on us throughout everything we do in Jesus's name, amen.
States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, Ms. Skelton, can you give us a roll call?
Here.
Ms. Wetzel?
Here.
Ms. Young?
Here.
Mr. Olson?
Here.
Mr. Bradley?
Here.
Mr. Pearson?
Here.
Mr. Gray?
Here.
Mr. Keller?
Here.
Mayor Teague?
Here.
Mr. Smith and myself. You got it for him.
All right, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, have you had the opportunity to look over the minutes for the August 21st, 25 meeting?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I got a motion and a second to approve the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving forward at this point in time, oh, you're already up there, okay. Ms. Baker's, uh, Ms. Baker's gonna give us our finance report.
All right. General fund revenues for the month of August totaled 1,358,028, which is just right at budget projections. Of that, 1,110,008.12 was sales tax and state turn back. 51,409 was franchise fees and permits. 195,987 was all other revenue. A tax revenue comparison for the city and county sales tax. For year-to-date, the city's portion was 3,740,525. The county's portion was 4,527,954. And for budget, both of those are just slightly below budget projections, but they are trending in the right direction. General fund expenditures for August were 1,330,542. Of that, 1,89,276 were personnel expenditures, 241,266 were utilities and other. Street fund revenues for the month of August totaled 1,214,135. Of that, 678,996 was 2021 street sales tax, 219,033 was state turn back and ad valorem tax, 102,938 was interest, 700 was street cutting permits, 212,468 was all other revenue. Street fund expenditures for the month of August, operational expenditures were 218,739. Of that, 135,806 was personnel, 82,933 was utilities and other. Capital expenses totaled 4,0561, that was for a concrete bucket. The 2021 street sales tax spending totaled 1,64,701. That was towards South Waterloo Avenue, drainage maintenance, pavement preservation, downtown improvements, the Ray's Grant Project, and the US 64 West Sidewalk Project. State turn back street project spending was 4,200, and that was Russerville Trails and Traffic Signal Improvements. Economic Development Funds revenue was 128,816. Of that, 106,000 was new sales tax and rent, 22,816 was interest. Expenditures totaled 48,756, and that was parking lot improvements at the soccer complex. The balances of the Economic Development Funds are listed below, combined at 6,77,080.75. Capital Asset Fund, August revenue was 14.50, all of that was interest. Expenditures totaled 24,7978, and that was for an ambulance repair. Below is a breakdown of the 2021 cents sales tax, what's received, what's been spent, the balances remaining. The cash balances at the end of August totaled together 23,608,415.31. And that concludes the finance report, if there are no questions.
Thank you so much, Ms. Baker, appreciate you. All right. All right, and Mayor's report, like I said earlier, I would like to welcome the 25, 26 youth council, there's a whole slew of you, and we're excited, we swore them in a little bit earlier. I do want to personally thank Councilman Gray and Ms. Skelton for all they do as far as the youth council.
Mr. Keller also helped a lot.
Mr. Keller was down there today, and so like I say, it's, Ms. Wetzel was down there too, if I remember right. If there was anybody else able to be down there, I know everybody else may have been working, but it is, it's great to have all of you. They voted a mayor and vice mayor, I think, didn't they, or I was?
The mayor is Corey Brown.
Yes, stand up real quick.
And our vice mayor is Ian Warning.
Yeah. We're excited, great, great group of young people, we're excited to see what, see what you guys do this year, and it's, the future's really bright.
Hey, we did take a vote on which mayor had the best hair.
Yeah, Corey won, we, 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 between her and I, who had the best hair, and I'm just gonna say she's got better hair than me.
She's letting everyone.
And then we do have a group of Girl Scouts that came in for a tour today, and they were back in the back, we're grateful for all the, the volunteers that make a difference between Girl Scout, Boy Scouts of America, and Cub Scouts, and all the different entities that are out there, so. And one last thing before we get on there, we have the legislative audit, have you guys have been presented with that, and hopefully you've had an opportunity to look at that, and I do believe we need to do a roll call on that, so Ms. Skelton, if you would do a roll call, basically stating that you have looked and been presented the legislative audit. One thing I would like to say real quick is a lot of, if you ever see people say, well, the city should be audited, we are audited every year, all of our finances are audited. There's literally a team from the state, which is called Legislative Audit, they come and they literally stay in our building for probably three months, there's a team of them, and they go to all of the departments, they look at everything, and so we are, we definitely are audited, and so that is something that does happen every year.
All right, this is for the 2023, and then I think the 2024 will be out shortly, we'll have to do it again. Mr. George?
Yes.
Ms. Wetzel?
Yes.
Ms. Young sent me an email stating that she had read it. Mr. Olson?
He's at a conference.
Mr. Bradley?
Yes.
Mr. Pearson?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Keller?
Yes.
Mayor Teague?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Smith and myself, thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to departmental report, Chief Ewing's got a 30-second report.
Uh, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, thank you for allowing me to do my report for the youth council that's here. If you don't know who I am, my name's David Young, I'm the chief of police for the city of Russerville, and I think I talked to some of you before the meetings and offered you an opportunity to come, police department visit, and we can have a good old time and learn about your PD while you're part of the youth council, so I wanted to throw that out there. For my annual report, you know, this is not a comprehensive report of all the activities that occurred in 2025, but it is, but its purpose is to highlight our accomplishments, display the progress that we have made in providing law enforcement services to this community, and the challenges that we face in delivering those police services. This is just a picture of, montage of the year in review, you know, even though most of the work that we do goes unnoticed, you know, 2025 has been the year where we were more in the spotlight, not just locally, but across the state and the nation. Whether it was managing protests to investigate in high-profile cases, the professionalism and the dedication by your Russerville Police to officers and investigators to keep our community safe has been impressive. You know, working with our local, state, and federal law enforcement partners, we have been able to hold those accountable who distribute deadly drugs in our community, and we addressed human trafficking head-on. You know, I have included a couple of the few press releases in your packet, you know, a lot of times people see it in the news and kind of skim over it, but please read those because it does, there's a lot of hours that go into that, and a lot of hard work to make this happen. You know, while providing professional police services, we continue to improve our engagement with the community. From our Citizens Police Academy to our involvement with our local Special Olympics organization, we continue to explore ways to further engage with our citizens. You know, some of the programs that we've done that, you've seen the increased bike patrols, I think they're pretty popular in the downtown area and on the trails, you know, the Project LifeSaver, that's one where we're looking at getting funding for devices to help with Alzheimer's patients when they get lost, we're still working on that. And of course, our Citizens Police Academy, we start in January, we're going to be taking applications in the next few months, and that's always been popular with the citizens in the city. They have a lot of fun with that one, apparently. But we do a lot of other things too, I mean, you see the torch ride and all that. You know, sharing our expertise, this is actually kind of funny, you know, we at the police department believe in sharing our knowledge and training with others. One example of this, and this is the first time I think we've ever done this, was having our driving instructors do a citywide training for those who drive city vehicles to educate and familiarize them with the basic vehicle operations in order to reduce accidents. I think, I think almost every department, I think every department participated. Needless to say, when budget comes around, I'm gonna need a few more cones.
Yeah.
But it was a good time, and I think I heard a lot of positive responses from that.
Did you keep track of which one was, which department was the best in driving?
Police Department, of course.
Oh, my gosh.
If you see lawn mowers pitted into the ditches, we did not teach them, Matt Terry, I'm just telling you. Appointments and promotions during, during the year, we did have the following promotes, appointments and promotions were made. Officer Haley Tolic was appointed to the Public Information Officer, and if you have not seen her work, I mean, she's out there everywhere, very proud of her, she sees my vision, and she took, she took the bull by the horns and ran with it for sure. Of course, Officer Andrew Reeves, who was a former Public Information Officer, he was promoted to the rank of sergeant, and Officer Alex Shipley was promoted to the rank of sergeant. Department recognition, you know, we've had several officers recognized during this year, the following officers were recognized and awarded for their dedication to the community and this department. It should be noted that all these nominations for these awards were persons outside of this department that came from the community. You know, Officer Jenna Spencer got a CARES Award, Sergeant Andrew Reeves got the Housing Authority Community Service Award, and Corporal Kevin Hobby, even though it was in December, it has been since I last reported, he got the Arkansas Attorney General, Pope County Officer of the Year for 2024. So we're proud that we're getting the state recognition that highlights the professionalism of your police department. A couple of other things, everybody loves a dog, see, I won't hear another word I say, but also in August of this year, we had our three-year re-accreditation inspection in order to maintain our tier-one accreditation status. We've been accredited agencies since 2015, and we were second in the state out of 36 agencies to receive this designation. We successfully met all the criteria to remain accredited, and with the accessor making the statement, and I'm kind of proud of this, that our department is one that others should model after. Now, it doesn't say that we're perfect by any means, but it does display our commitment to providing professional police services to this community. And we're also looking for ways to improve, and I know my time's running out, I'm sure the timer's about to come up there, James, but you're always looking, and I actually added this today because I was in Little Rock, I was in Little Rock for a meeting today, and we're always looking for ways to improve our services that we provide to the community, whether it's the addition of drones, canines, or other technology. Just today, and I, I'm really excited about this, I was in a meeting in Little Rock with 20 of the largest departments in the state, where we were asked to participate in an information-sharing network that would be at no cost to the city, paid for by a federal grant. You know, this would allow us to share information more efficiently between agencies as we deal with the same people in this highly mobile society, so that is something very exciting for us. So, and it costs no money, did I mention that? Okay. I, to conclude, well, let me do this first, I have a video, I need to do that right now.
No, a video?
It's a 45-second video, boss, I promise you.
I'll call you Setian.
But this video actually is a promotional video, brand-new, and you're the first public showing of it.
Oh, I'm excited about this, yeah.
Have you seen it yet, boss?
No, I haven't, I'm excited.
Okay, let me make sure I run this right here, I gotta... So, have you tested the audio, we're good? Okay, so.
Our success is solely based on our relationships with the community, that includes our neighborhoods, businesses, our school district, and anybody else that, you know, depends on the safety and protection that Russell Police Department provides. The mission of the Russell Police Department is simple but powerful, you know, our mission is to provide professional police services to enhance community safety, to protect life and property, and to reduce crime and the fear of crime. Join the Russellville Police Department, we're a great place to work, we serve a great community, great support, you'll love it here.
Yes, sir.
All right, I'm taking applications now. Hey, I like it, I like it. I have multiple openings, so please apply.
Yeah.
To conclude, though, our continued success would not have been possible without the support of the mayor, the city council, and our community partners. Also want to thank the men and women of the police department who serve, you know, in daily commit to our department and this community. It's truly honored to serve as your chief, as their chief, as we continue to face the challenges that face our profession as a community as we move forward. So, thank you very much, I'll answer any questions, or we're good.
Before you leave, chief, I would like to say, I know you're not going to say it, but Police Chief David Ewing was inducted into the Arkansas NHARO Housing Hall of Fame for 2025. This is something that someone outside of the department nominated him for, this is a statewide award, and we're proud of your community commitment, and that's, it's really good to see that recognized outside of our city.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. All right. Okay, Mr. Gray?
Thank you, Mayor. Personnel Committee met 10 days ago or so and considered an item brought by Mr. Keller, and we have created an ordinance that will be added to the Personnel Policy Manual that will give an employee discount for certain city recreational facilities and rentals. And with that, Mayor, I move that we suspend the rules, read by title only, one-of-one readings of this ordinance.
I have a motion and a second on the reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Sir?
In order to amend the city of Russerville Personnel Policy Manual by adding a section, Section 18, to add employee discount rate for city recreation facilities and rental policy and for other purposes, this ordinance would pass would amend the current Personnel Policy Manual of the City of Russerville by adding a new section, Section 18, within Section 3 of General and Police Benefits.
Motion to adopt.
I have a motion and a second to adopt. Any discussion? Ms. Skelton, can you give me a roll call?
Yes.
Mr. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Pearson?
Yes.
Mr. Bradley?
Yes.
Mr. Olson, Ms. Young, Ms. Wetzel?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
You have a call.
All right. Anything else, Mr. Gray?
No, thank you, council, for doing that, it's gonna be a nice benefit for our city employees.
Thank you for bringing it. Mr. Keller, moving on to Finance Committee, do you have anything tonight?
One or two items, sir. From our 5:30 meeting this evening, item one is consideration of a resolution authorizing the mayor and the city clerk treasurer to execute an amendment to the agreement with Blackstone Construction LLC as construction manager to modify the downtown streetscape plan to improve traffic and pedestrian safety, to expand the project in a limited scope, and to add more drainage improvements for the project. We present item one as a motion to adopt.
All right, I got a motion to adopt, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Item two has no more actions on it this evening. Items three and seven, item three is consideration of a resolution waiving formal bidding requirements for the purchase of Stryker Sales Cardiac Life Pack 35 monitors and defibrillators, total of five of them, for the Russellville Fire Department's Firebase EMS. And seven is the appropriation from the Russellville EMS Services Fund 10 and the amount of $419,308.44 to purchase those five cardiac monitors. We present items three and seven as a motion to adopt.
All right, I've got a motion to adopt on items three and seven, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Item four is consideration of a resolution to authorize the mayor and the city clerk treasurer to execute an agreement extension for lawn care services of the Russellville Oakland Cemetery with after-hours lawn care incorporated for the calendar years of 2026 and 2027, under the same terms and price in the current agreement. We present item four as a motion to adopt.
I've got a motion to adopt on item four, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Items five and five A, item five is consideration of a resolution accepting a bid and authorizing the mayor and the city clerk treasurer to execute a contract to install parking lot lights and EV chargers at the downtown parking lot between Commerce and Arkansas Avenue. And item five is the appropriation from Economic Development Capital Fund Number 27 and the amount of $116,413.49 for the lighting and EV chargers. We present items five and five As a motion to adopt.
Items five and five A, have a motion to adopt, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Item six is a consideration of a resolution to authorize the mayor and the city clerk treasurer to execute a bill of sale as buyers for the structure at 201 West Parkway Drive. We present item six as a motion to adopt.
All right, we got a motion to adopt on item six, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, sir.
Items eight and eight A, item eight A is consideration of a resolution for the City of Russerville to accept a bid through Onia, or was it Omnia Partners from Geo Service Surfaces Incorporated to purchase new turf for the fields at the Russellville Soccer Park on behalf of the Russellville Parks and Recreation Department. And item eight is the appropriation from the 2021 Parks and Rec Special Fund and General Fund Reserves and the sum of $355,800 for that new turf. We present items eight and eight As a motion to adopt.
Have a motion from eight and eight A to adopt, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Item nine is consideration of a resolution levying millage taxes on all property in the city of Russellville, Arkansas for the year 2025, repealing Resolution Number 2284. We present item nine as a motion to adopt.
Got a motion to adopt on item nine, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I abstain. From our finance meeting last Tuesday, item one is consideration of a resolution authorizing the mayor and the city clerk treasurer to accept a bid from Western Mill Rights for the Russellville Municipal Airport to enter in an agreement with Western Mill Right for this project, and we present item one as a motion to adopt.
Got a motion to adopt on item one, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Item two is consideration of a resolution authorizing the mayor and the city clerk treasurer to enter in a lease agreement with Seabridge Acquisitions Limited Partnerships to Business Optimum for downtown underground conduit access and for other purposes. We present item two as a motion to adopt.
We got a motion to adopt on item two, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Item three is an appropriation from the Economic Development Capital Fund 27 and the amount of $57,895.80 to fund the parking lot improvements at Fire Station 2, and we present item three as a motion to adopt.
I've got a motion to adopt on item three, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Item four is consideration of a resolution authorizing the mayor and the city clerk treasurer to accept the bid from Western Mill Rights for the Russellville part of the annual sidewalk maintenance program to install sidewalks and to enter an agreement with Western Mill Right for said purposes. We present item four as a motion to adopt.
Have a motion to adopt on item four, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving forward.
Item five is consideration of a resolution authorizing the mayor and the city clerk treasurer to enter into an agreement with tax, Tabor Tax Back. We present item five as a motion to adopt.
Got a motion to adopt on item five, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you.
Item six is an appropriation from the General Fund Carryover Balance and the sum of $10,000 to cover the expense of the 215 East Circle Drive demolition. We present item six as a motion to adopt.
All right, got a motion to adopt on item six, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Item seven is an appropriation from the 2021 Sales Tax Capital Fund 7 and the sum of $166,863.70 to purchase extraction equipment for Rescue Unit 1. We present item seven as a motion to adopt.
I got a motion to adopt on item seven, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Item eight has been requested to be tabled, so I move item eight be tabled.
I got a motion and a second to table item eight, all in favor?
Discussion first?
Any discussion?
Yeah. Hi, we've been doing this, I don't know how many times we have had, however many iterations of this, and I don't understand why we keep, why we're where we are. The annex, as I understood it, when we had a two-hour work session or whatever it was on this three months ago, or four months, whatever it was, to get this done, the annex was always part of the whole deal, it was just gonna be phase two.
It was, would you like, I mean, we can go into discussion, and I can bring the audio from the meeting if you would like to, so we could hear.
So it was not, it was not?
No, ma'am, no, sir, and if you'll, and I will share the audio with you from our audio repository at 1 minute 34 seconds. I clarify at the end just to go over that it is for the church only is what we're going to do, and so, I mean, you can go back, and if you, you guys can see something different, I don't know how we can, but I clarified at the end of that, I went back today and clarified that, and Mr. Hodge does have the audio, if we would like to, he can come down here.
I'm not disputing that.
No, no, but know what I'm saying, I'm just saying if we want to pull the audio up to, because that, that's what I, that's what Mr. Smith and I went off of, was the audio and what we had talked about, there is a...
Okay, then why wasn't that communicated to the Russerville Playhouse?
Okay, it, because...
What, Mr. Smith?
They were sitting right there, nobody objected to what the mayor said, except they asked for a right of first refusal if it did come up written in the agreement.
The right of first refusal is, for the annex is in the agreement.
Then why is asbestos in here?
Where's asbestos at?
I know that, when we talked about asbestos, but now it's saying that we can't, as I'm reading the... as I'm reading, trying to read the contract, that asbestos is an issue when it's been sitting out there with asbestos, and it's no one's, the Playhouse is not trying to use the annex right now. That was gonna be a part of their Phase 2, and doesn't it say something about removing asbestos?
I don't have the contract in front of me. I can...
Well, I mean, I read it, and...
I mean, I would think if there, we don't know at this time if 100% sure if there's any asbestos in the church. So if there was any asbestos in the church, then it would have to be removed.
Yeah, the church, I'm talking about the annex buildings. That seems to be what it's about. So here's my suggestion. I don't understand why the Russellville Playhouse can't sit down with the mayor and the city attorney and get this hashed out face-to-face. This is month three, we're still talking about this. We still haven't agreed, because every time we come back, one side or the other doesn't seem to agree, and I think the only way you can agree, we had the work session. And so the only way to agree, as I see it, is that the folks who are going to make the contract, that'd be the city attorney, the mayor, who is going to carry out that contract, and the Playhouse, sit down in a room and get this done.
I think the problem comes is that we've reached an impasse, and so we're not accepting their changes. So unless you want to either back one side or the other, that's where we're at.
Well, isn't that what attorneys do, is they sit and we go back and forth, and we get something written that everyone can agree to?
No, it's to protect the client's interest, and they're wanting to loosen restrictions thereby the city's asset is under less protection than I'm trying to make it be. It's...
What would be lessened?
When you take out for convenience, when you increase the time for abandonment, when you make, put more and more, loosen the restrictions so that they can hold the property longer, and should something happen and the city want to get out of it, it won't be able to for some time, and that asset could be potentially in danger of losing value in some way.
I don't see how it's gaining any value right now, but or losing, probably losing value. Still, this seems to be...
There's other people wanting to buy it, so I don't think it's losing value.
We heard that forever, that somebody wanted to buy this until the Russellville Playhouse came forward, and then, then people showed an interest after they came forward. But it's been out there since I've been on the council, and before I was on the council, it's been sitting there, as is. This, it feels like it's being slow-walked in some way to me. It just feels like this, we're not, I don't understand why we can't sit down...
I just told you, we're at an impasse on those things, so...
Well, maybe we wouldn't be at an impasse if we weren't doing an email back and forth between the mayor and you and I. Have you answered any of the Playhouse's emails, or any of their, to speak to them?
I haven't, they haven't sent me anything. I get stuff forwarded, but I work for the city.
Well, forwarded is sent?
I work for the city.
I understand that.
I don't work for the Playhouse.
But the council has brought the Playhouse as a potential suitor to use this property in some way, and I still, for the life of me, cannot understand why we can't get those folks in the room, everybody in the room, so we can hammer something out.
Right.
This keeps coming back over and over again. We're wasting their time, we're wasting our time, and I would just like something done.
Do you want me to agree with whatever they say?
I didn't say that, Mr. Smith. Don't put words in my mouth.
Yes, I, well, you are.
I said I would like for you to sit down with them and the mayor, and let's figure out something.
Ms., Mr. Gray, just, y'all gonna read from my email. The exclusion of the annex is item one, okay? As my understanding, according to the agree, the audio, the annex was excluded with the exception of... No, no, sir, I'm just gonna explain, I'm going over these points, okay, so that you understand where we're sticking, okay, sir? And so the exclusion with the annex was it was for Mr. Bowger and Mr. Pistone ask at probably around 34, 36 minutes into that agreement that they would only do the church, and so they wouldn't have to worry about the annex at the time. Okay, so if that can be, if that can be worked out, because Section 41 does give them the first right of refusal on the contract, so...
That's great. That's not even what I'm talking about. What I'm talking about is can we just, maybe if they, if y'all sat down face-to-face, they would say, you know what, we're okay, given the city's legal responsibility for that building, as Mr. Smith just says, we don't want that anymore, or we want to keep it as the contract is. If we could just get in a room together, instead of this back and forth, I'm tired of seeing this coming in front of us. I just want something done, and I think the only way at this point is for us to eyeball each other, and the three of you eyeball each other and get this done. So it doesn't come back in these various iterations. Every month, it's a different iteration. It's a different set of problems, and I don't understand.
All right, well, Mr. Smith and I will stay after this meeting and sit down with the Russellville Playhouse.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, all right. Where we at?
We have a motion to table item eight on the floor.
Yes.
Is there any further discussion on item eight? Hearing non-alaws in favor of tabling item eight, please say aye. All who oppose, say nay. Item eight is tabled. Item nine was the ordinance from the Personnel Committee. Item 10 is consideration of a resolution to accept the lowest responsible bid and to authorize the mayor and the city clerk treasurer to sign a construction agreement and associated paperwork with Bowden Specialties Incorporated for construction of drainage system improvements on South Tampa Avenue and South Utica Avenue. We present item 10 as a motion to adopt.
All right, I have a motion to adopt on item 10. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, ma'am, that is the last item on finance agenda this evening.
All right, thank you, Mr. Keller. So, in unfinished old business, I'm sorry. Item one is consideration ordinance amending the fiscal code for the City of Russellville, adopted by ordinance 2520, by amending the fixed assets inventory to increase minimum limits threshold from 2,500 to $5,000 for other purposes. This will be the third and final reading. Short, with a short.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second on the reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Sir.
Norance submitting the fiscal code for the City of Russellville, adopted by ordinance number 2520, by amending the fixed asset inventory to increase the minimum limits threshold from 2,500 to 5,000 for other purposes. This ordinance passed would amend the fiscal code and increase the fixed asset inventory from 2,500 to 5,000.
Move to adopt item one.
Have a motion and a second to adopt. Any discussion? All right, Ms. Skelton, can you give me a roll call?
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Keller?
Aye.
Ms. Wetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Bradley?
Yes.
Mr. Pearson?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Six zero.
All right, thank you. Moving on to item two, unfinished old business, consideration ordinance amending the fiscal code for the City of Russellville, Arkansas, adopted by ordinance 2520 by establishing a process to remove fixed assets that depreciate below the minimum threshold from the fixed asset inventory for other purposes. This will be the third and final reading of this.
Move to suspend the rules, dispense with the reading requirement. Read by title with short explanation for the third and final time.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second on the reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Sir.
Norance submitting the fiscal code of the City of Russellville, adopted by ordinance 2520, established process to remove fixed assets that depreciate below the minimum threshold from the fixed asset inventory for other purposes. This ordinance would set up a procedure to remove fixed assets that do depreciate and sets up a depreciation guideline to depreciate those fixed assets so that it can show a formula which that will remove them once it goes below the threshold.
Move the adoption of item two.
Have a motion and a second on item two. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Moving on to new business, we have...
We gotta do a...
Oh, it is, it is roll call, I'm sorry. I apologize, that is an ordinance, okay. Ms. Skelton, you give me a roll call.
Mr. Keller?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Wetzel?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Thank you for catching me, Ms. Skelton. Moving on to item one of new business is consideration ordinance amending the current zoning code for the City of Russellville, Arkansas, adopted by ordinance of 2443 and for other purposes. This item is submitted by the Planning Commission. This is requesting a one-time only with an emergency clause, if possible. Mr. Wilson, do you have anything to say, or?
I don't have anything to say, but we do have Ms. Shelby over here who would like to speak on it.
Move to suspend the rules, dispense with the reading requirement, read, because we gotta do the motion.
Okay, okay, yeah. We have to move forward before we can get into discussion. So, we have a motion and a second on the reading.
To read it one of one.
One, we have a motion.
That's separate.
Yes, separate, that's separate.
One and the other.
We have a motion to read, suspend the rules, read by title only with a short explanation, reading one of one. Is that correct, Mr. Keller?
That is correct, sir.
We have a second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, no, we need discussion. No, no, yes, all in favor? Any opposed? No? Or no, I need discussion first, right?
Before we vote, we have discussion.
Okay, any discussion, so we're gonna go into discussion. Do we need to hear from her, or you guys?
I just want to be reminded of the...
You want to be reminded, okay, okay.
The reason, emergency clause, I'm not saying I'm against, I just want to be reminded of the reason.
Ms. Stuber, would you come to the microphone and please state your name for those that are watching at home?
Hi. Good evening. My name is Shelby Stuber. I'm here today not just as a business owner, but as a wife, mother, and neighbor, and a member of this community. I want to talk to you about why family home daycare as a special permit use in R1, single-family residential zones in the Table of Permitted Uses found in the Russellville Zoning Code would mean so much to me personally, to my business, and to the others in our community. For me, this isn't just about convenience, it's about stability. Right now, the rules make it where my family would have to move out of our home that we just purchased less than three months ago for me to be able to continue my in-home daycare in the hopes of keeping Donna Tucker's legacy alive. Being able to live where I work would reduce my overhead costs, keep me close to my family, and give me more time and energy to pour back into my work, and by extension, to the kiddos that I love. From a business perspective, it's not just about survival, it's about growth. Lower expenses mean I can reinvest in to improving services and adding educational resources and keeping my rates affordable for the families I work with. That's especially important in today's economy where every dollar matters for the parents. And the benefits go beyond me. This regulation change could open doors for other small business owners in our community who are in the same situation. People who have valuable skills and services to offer but can't afford a separate commercial space. Allowing us to live and work in the same location supports entrepreneurship, keeps money circulating locally, and strengthens our community as a whole. When small businesses thrive, communities thrive. We create jobs, we provide services for families that they rely on, and we keep our neighborhoods vibrant. The regulation change is a step towards to making our community a place where working from home isn't just a privilege for few, but it's an opportunity for many. I'm asking you to see the human side of this decision. This isn't just about changing a line in the zoning document. It's about helping hard-working people like myself stay rooted in the place that we call home while contributing to the community we love. Thank you for your time and your consideration in listening to my story. Do you have any questions? I know that usually...
Just to clarify, this house has been a daycare for how long? I mean...
She built it in 2000, and so she ran it all the way up until she passed away, and I want to say that was about four years ago.
It's been there for a long time.
Yes.
Just a...
And can you, I just want to be reminded of the reason for the emergency clause.
So the emergency clause is so I can start working right away. I went in there thinking that we could have as many as 12 kiddos in the home and live there. But now we had a, currently, we live in a camper on my parents' property. So this would just allow me to move my family back in home and start working like I was.
Gotcha. I remember now, I just want to be reminded, and what Mr. Wilson also talked about last time. Thank you.
Now, you also, just to make sure I was understanding correctly, you also, originally, the plan was to be able to have between 12 and 15 kids, but because of the, the, what essentially was, is an oversight from zoning
Yes.
for years, apparently, so I'm glad we caught it and were able to fix it. But you're then having to drop down to seven, because that's all you are legally able to care for until something, until you receive special, special use permit, which is part of this ordinance.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Roll call? No, we do need to roll call that, because that isn't, we, we have... So we do need to adopt it first before you can do the...
Motion to adopt.
Second.
I thought we did have a motion to adopt. Okay, most adopt. No, wait, we have to have the reading first, because you've done, or did you read first? I got lost there. You read it, okay, I'm sorry. I got lost there. So you have a motion to adopt, have a second to adopt. All in favor? Any opposed? All right. Okay, you need to get a roll call on this, because it's ordinance.
I got you. Mr. Keller?
Aye.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Ms. Wetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Bradley?
Yes.
Mr. Pearson?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Six zero.
Okay.
Move for the emergency clause?
Second.
Motion and second on emergency clause. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Do we need to roll call, we need to roll call the emergency clause?
Thank you. Mr. Keller?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Young? Mr. George?
Yes.
Six zero.
Did you call Ms. Wetzel? I didn't hear Ms. Wetzel.
Ms. Wetzel? Six zero.
There you go, all right. All right, moving on. Item two is consideration ordinance amending the land subdivision development code for the City of Russellville, Arkansas, adopted by ordinance 2444. I said one word, four, I think there. And for other purposes, is sponsored by Planning Commission.
Mayor, move to suspend the rules, dispense with the reading requirement, read by title with short explanation for the first of three readings.
Second.
Got a motion and a second on the reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, sir.
Norance submitting the land subdivision development code for the City of Russellville, adopted by ordinance number 2444. Other purposes, this ordinance, if passed, would amend the land subdivision development code in Article 5, Section 5.3, require, with the additional requirements to add to the final plat, the base flood elevations in special flood hazard areas.
Okay, so that should be it, because, did we, what was the, how many did you read of one, first of three? First of three, okay. All right, does anyone else have anything? All right, I'll take a motion. All right, we will be adjourned.